I'd like to call to order the December 5th, 2022 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be made available on wb-cam.org. I'd like to introduce Ms. Hannah Freeman to the committee. Hannah, thank you for being here and taking the time to be our student rep tonight. You're welcome. So first up is one of my favorite things, recognizing some of our awesome students. Tonight we have with us the 2022 John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients and the recipients of the Peace Poster Award.
Thank you. I want to first thank the school committee for allowing us the opportunity to recognize some of our amazing seniors. The students here this evening have received the Abigail Adams Scholarship. Just a little about the Abigail Adams Scholarship. You need to be able to score in the Advanced category in one of the MCAS High School State Exam, so ELA Math or the STE, which for us is Biology. Also, you need to score in the Proficient or Advanced category in the remaining two High School State Assessment Tests. So all these students here tonight have done just that. Along with that, they need to have a combined MCAS score on these assessments that rank in the top 25% of their class. Oh, actually, their school district. So they may be from ascending district, so it's for there. So a great job to all of you. Congratulations. With the Abigail Adams Award, you have tuition up to eight semesters in a Massachusetts State School. So it can be up to about $8,000 over the course of four years for some of the UMass schools. So congratulations when I call your name. If you could just come on up, and then if you can stay over here, we'd love to get a group picture, okay? Our first recipient is Bryn Bouvier. Not all students were able to be with us this evening. They had other commitments with work and so forth, so I don't believe Hope is here. Maddie Ellis. Madison Ellis. No Brendan? Okay, I don't think Julius is here. Lexi Levine. I don't believe she could be here this evening. Caitlin Lockwood. Again, I don't think she was able to be here. They both deserve a round of applause. No Adara? It's pretty awesome how many we have. And last but not least, Kaylee Terrio. Does the school committee want to stand with them? I think you should.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Bodwell, can I bother you for one quick sec? I guess Hope Crompton is here. She came in late.
Oh.
So can we get her over here and just say congratulations?
Of course.
Tell Hope to come here. Hope Crompton.
Thank you. All right, so of course, everyone's welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but we'll just break for about two minutes to give people a chance to leave if they choose to. All right, we are back, and happily, we have some more recognitions to do. The Peace Prize Poster recipients. Mr. Lehman?
All right, good evening. The Lions Club of West Bridgewater sponsors the Lions Club International Peace Poster Contest for our district each year. This year's theme was "Lead with Compassion." I'd like to call up our three top winners. In third place, Mr. Aaron Hamley. Come on up. In second place, Tristan Hamley.
Great job, you guys. Very, very well done. Came out great. All right, approval of minutes. First, I'd like to make a motion to accept our November 7th, 2022 minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And next, I'd like to make a motion to accept our November 16th, 2020 minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Superintendent's update. Mr. Bodwell?
Right, we've got to have a few updates. The first is going to be Mrs. Hammel's going to give us an update on the fall sports and the winter sports. We've just started.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me in. I always love coming here and whooping it up with our Wildcats. Here we go. We had a great fall season, everybody. Couldn't be more proud of our sports teams, athletes, everyone involved. It was super, super exciting. I do have some little write-ups about each team that I'd like to share. And I'm going to start with our WB Golf Team. So the golf team had a great season, finishing second in the conference and qualified for the state tournament. The team was led by senior captains Tyler Bisby and Vidi Centrella. Mayflower All-Stars are Tyler Bisby and Aiden Delahoy. A special thanks to the West Bridgewater Country Club for being very welcoming and an awesome host for our golf team. They do, they do a super job, and I love going over there. Our field hockey team. The WB Field Hockey Team had a great season, finishing 11, 5, and 3. The team was led by seniors Olivia Raza, Lily Martell, Kiera O'Connell, and Lexi Levine. The girls showed up every day, willing to work, proved their record. They were named MAC League champs. They made it to the state where they lost a hard-fought game to Ipswich 3-1. Special congrats to Olivia Raza, Kiera O'Connell, Grace Poland, and Abby Mata for being named MAC All-Stars. Well done. Volleyball, so exciting. The WB varsity volleyball team had an incredible season, finishing 19 and 3. The girls were led by a wonderful senior class. Maddie Ellis, Alexa Gately, Julia Holland, Dorothea McGrath, Leah Oliveria, and Hannah Smith. They dominated the regular season and followed with an impressive tournament run. For the first time in program history, they made it to the Elite Eight. They lost a hard-fought match against Hopedale. Special congrats to Alexa Gately, Hannah Smith, and Julia Holland for being named MAC All-Stars. Brooke Robichaud was also named co-MVP. We had a couple volleyball players participate in the MAC Volleyball Classic, Maddie Ellis and Alexa Gately, but a wonderful season. Super great to see that program continue to soar and grow, so much congratulations to them. Our boys soccer team had a great year, posting a 10, 7, and 3 record. They won a big playoff game in the playing game and in the state tournament. They lost a close game to East Hampton, but they did a super, super job. The boys led by seniors Drew Raifel, Ryan Estrella, Kayan Santiago-Collin, Ben Fuller, and Ryan McGrath. And they also, a special congrats to their MAC All-Stars, Ryan Estrella, Ben Fuller, and Ryan McGrath. It was an awesome season. Boys and Girls Cross Country. The cross-country teams both had successful returns to the Mayflower Conference this fall. The girls went on to win their 17th straight Mayflower championship, and the boys won their fifth straight Mayflower title. Ella Dunbury, Viviana Morales-Walkin, Lily Andrews, Catherine Dunhaman, and Lily Milton were all awarded MAC All-Stars. Ella Dunbury was also named Runner of the Year for the girls. For the boys, Bryce Layton, Ryan Guinness, Greg Turner, Kenley Lane, and Jason George were all named All-Stars. Bryce Layton was also named the Runner of the Year. Congrats to both the teams on a great season. Our football team, the 2022 WB Football Team had a very successful season with an 8-3 record, led by captains Shawn Carter, Nate Anderson, and Will DeLuca. A high point of the season was that 35-13 win over Southeastern on Thanksgiving Day in a battle of 106. It was awesome. Congrats to Jame Harris, who in that game was named MVP. There were also many players nominated for league and state awards that haven't been announced yet. That's to be determined. And a special shout-out to our seniors, Will DeLuca, Shawn Carter, Nate Anderson, Jesse Ames, Jayden Cobbs, Jake Campbell, Nathan Hancock, Justin Estano, Brady Charles, Junior Duarte, Brandon LaGrange, and Cole Chadwell. Thank you for all the players and families for their hard work, dedication, and support. We look forward to another great 2023. Our girls soccer team had a great season. The varsity girls were 15, 3, and 0 in the regular season, finished 16-4 overall. They were crowned MAC League Champions and made it to the state tournament. Special congrats to League All-Stars Rachel Guinness, Emma Lavoy, Amanda Jakes, and Kylie Fuller. Kylie was also named League MVP. Special thank you to our seniors Amanda Jakes, Chloe Hume, Bryn Bouvier, Talia Donahue, Sarah Kirtan, Shelby Lane, Emma Lavoy, Nora Brodo. We are very proud of the hard work and success of all the girls this season. Our cheer squad, the varsity cheer squad, their team had an amazing season and made all the better by the addition of Coach Romano. They proudly brought home the title of Mayflower Athletic Conference Division Four Champions, once again qualifying for South Regionals. The Wildcats held their own, some of the most competitive teams in the state, and rounded out their stellar season by outscoring their previous performance and hitting zero for the second year in a row. Senior captains Adara McNeil, Casey Mackin, along with captains Reese Bunker, Serena McDonald, led the team by example and provided support and strength for their teammates all season long. Way to go Wildcats. So as we head, here we are, heading into our winter season. Certainly look forward to it. We're excited. Winter season's starting. Amazing week. Teams happy to be back for sure. Boys and Girls Varsity Basketball have their game opener against crosstown rivals East Bridgewater on December 14th at 4:30 for the boys and 6:00 for the girls. So come on out and check it out. We don't have a lot of back-to-back varsity games, so it'll be really fun. We're trying to make it a fun day for the kids. We have the girls. Let's see. Boys and Girls Track Team, they get their season started on the 15th of December. They run at Wheaton College. Girls Ice Hockey Team gets started at home on Saturday, December 10th, 6:30 p.m. Come on out. And the boys team starts Saturday, December 10th, 8:00 p.m. at Gallo. The gymnastics team gets started on Wednesday, January 4th, 8:00 p.m. at the Spectrum Gymnastics against Notre Dame Academy. So super fun. Looking forward to another fabulous, you know, season. Our student athletes, awesome. Special thanks to our coaches who, you know, put the time in every day, as do the students. So come on out, check it out. We can't wait. We are Wildcats. We love it. We love it. So, but thank you. I always love talking about our teams and our student athletes. Our dedication, devotion is awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Hannah, thank you for all you do. Ms. Page, Ms. Hannah, our coaches, our parents, and most of our student athletes for representing West Bridgewater with pride. We really love to watch them. And statewide tournament's been a great thing. We got to travel all the way up to Ipswich and out to Wacona Regional. If anyone knows where that is, bonus points to you, way out in Dalton. But we also got to have schools travel to us. And I think it's a great way to end the season for our kids. So congratulations to everyone, and most of all, for their participation and hard work. Because that's, in the end, that's what's most important, is they're part of a team and they work hard.
Absolutely. No, a fabulous job, and it's a lot of fun for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Collins for a technology update on our technology plan and where we were and where we're going.
Thank you for having me tonight. So one of my goals was to write up a technology plan, which was something that DESI required many, many years ago, and they got rid of the requirements. So the tech plan kind of fell apart after that. But it's kind of good to just gauge where we have come from, where we are now, and what to look for in the future, because technology changes quite a bit, as we all know. So the last time we wrote a plan was in 2011. So I started, you know, contacting other districts, hey, can I have a copy of your tech plan? And reached out to the technology teachers here, and we had a couple of Google Meet sessions, and we just kind of chatted and talked about some points that they would like to see. So what the plan has, it really outlines our current state of technology, what's in the classroom, what we have for infrastructure, our internet connection and stuff, and the technology that the staff uses every day. So, and it also contains goals, things that we would like to see in the future. So going back to 2014, we had about 300 Chromebooks. And it was mostly at the middle, senior, high school. They were on carts that they would get signed out, and they would get rolled into the elevator and all that. Staff had desktop computers, so they were very limited on, you know, flexible classroom where they could move about and such. So we had a limited Wi-Fi network. We had zero security cameras. We did have a good amount of iPads at the elementary schools, and we had projectors. Some were mounted. Most of the ones, especially at the high school, were on carts, so cables on the floor and such. And we only had a 300-megabit internet connection, which is pretty much what most households have right now, if not more. But that was supporting the entire town at the time, 300 megabits. So we've certainly grown since then. What really was a turning point in the school district was our one-to-one Chromebook program. With the opening of the new high school, we were able to give a Chromebook to every student, grade 7 through 12, and that kind of kicked off our one-to-one Chromebook program. And we've been able to sustain that since the building has opened. So all grade 7 students receive a new Chromebook when they come up to the middle, senior, high school. Each elementary classroom does have a complete set of Chromebooks. And then if the inventory does support, it does fluctuate depending on budget, and of course, with COVID kind of put a bump in things, we try to refresh devices in grade 10. And we also knew this year, we have an inventory control program that where we can track inventory of Chromebooks and also track all of the repairs that come into our office every day. In 2014, we switched over to Google Workspace, which was G Suite for Education. It's gone through a couple of names, but that really transformed how we teach, how students learn in West Bridgewater and all the schools that are using Google. Instead of, you know, paper and pencil, we're doing more things electronically. Students are able to collaborate together on a document, and, you know, they can even work remotely from home, collaborate on a document together. So that has opened up a lot of doors for students. Students now have email, so it's easier to communicate with their teachers. It's easier to communicate with their principal if they want to send them a message, rather than knocking on the door, trying to find them. It also gave teachers the ability to store documents in Google Drive so that they could access their work from home, which was never possible before we switched over to Google Drive. And then a few years after Google Workspace came out, we moved into Google Classroom, which was released. And that was really our first full-blown-out use of a learning management system. You know, it was very limited when it first opened, but it was, you know, you could see the potential and the connection with Google Drive that the Google Classroom offered. So that's been tremendous. And even today, just about every classroom teacher that I know has some kind of Google Classroom space, groups are using it, such as drama, some sports teams. So it's getting used quite a bit. It's a great way to collaborate and communicate. And then, of course, Google Meet. We all know Google Meet. It's kind of got us through COVID, but it's still used on occasion today. It helps with meetings. If a parent can't come on site for a meeting, sometimes we'll use Google Meet instead. So it's still a very powerful tool for us to use. So infrastructure and equipment is another section in the plan. So right now, all the staff have a Windows laptop or a Chromebook, depending on their role. All classrooms have a mounted digital projector. Some elementary classrooms have interactive whiteboards. They're definitely showing their age, but they are equipped with, some are equipped with interactive whiteboards. Here at the high school, we have one video editing lab. It's all Mac, Apple computers. And we have a Windows lab over here for the computer science and the computer art courses. The computer labs at the elementary school have really been eliminated. With all the students having a Chromebook, it kind of eliminated the need to have a separate space for just computers, because they, students are using the devices that they're most comfortable with. And right now, we have 2-gigabit internet connection, which is pretty strong. It does support the entire town, and we have a 10-gigabit fiber backbone that connects all of our buildings, and we do own that fiber. So all of our buildings are connected, which makes it a pretty robust network that we have. When we talk about curriculum, we look at the CMR model and a lot of observations that are done in all the buildings. We look at instructional technology use. It's using classroom observations. So it just rates, you know, are teachers just doing substitution or are they doing redefinition? And where are they falling on that? How are they using technology in the classroom? That's what we look at. And a few years old now, but the Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science Standards, we look at those when we're designing curriculum. And then, of course, the ISCE standards, which are the International Society for Technology and Education. We don't have a lot of formal technology curriculum written, but these are good, when designing lesson plans, these are good plans to look at and good frameworks to look at for technology curriculum. And it's not just in the computer science classes. We like to see this in all the classes, in the elementary classes, in the science classes, English, all that. So we'd like to see technology integration in all of these elements, in all the classes that we see, for all students. So software and student privacy. We're looking at software all the time, and we're really trying to look at a way to look at the software that we're using. Mostly, is it FERPA compliant to make sure that we're not violating any of that? All the vendors that we use, we try to make sure that they are COPA compliant. We are a part of the Massachusetts Student Privacy Alliance, and what that means is that any software that we use, we can actually, through this organization, we can create a privacy agreement that makes it, you know, pretty much ensures that the software that we're using is compliant with privacy standards. So it's really a big topic right now, and it's, a lot of schools, including us in West Bridgewater, are really trying to get a handle on student privacy and making sure that we're compliant, because it is very important. And what has kind of streamlined things for us is the use of Clever. So a lot of the real big applications that we use are integrated with Clever, so it allows students to easily sign in with their Google account, and it passes it right into the application without the need for an additional username and password. Clever passes all that on just through their Google account. We have a pretty robust communication platform. So of course, we have Aptige, which is our website. It's also our communication platform. So if you get a call saying, you know, school is out or anything like that, that is coming through Aptige. That is our program. That has replaced the ConnectEd program that we had for years. But in addition to the website, we can now have text notifications, obviously phone notifications. If you have the mobile app, we can push notifications out through the mobile app. We can also push out email notifications, and it can also manage our social media content, which has been huge for the principals, because on their phone, if they have the Aptige app, they can visit a classroom or take a picture of some student work, and it can go immediately out to Facebook or Twitter, right through the Aptige platform. So that's been huge. We've had Aspen for quite a bit now, nine years, and we have a pretty active student and parent portal. Pretty much, you know, parents can go in, check their student progress, making sure their contact information is correct. And a lot of teachers and principals use Aspen to send out emails to either the entire school or just the 12th graders, or even just to a class. Aspen can do that, send out email notifications. Mr. Bodwell's new favorite thing is the smore newsletters. Mr. Bodwell's new favorite thing is the smore newsletters. He loves those.
Everyone else's.
But what a great platform and just engagement in the newsletters and making them fun to read, easy to read. So, another great method of communication through the newsletters. Rather than just a static Google Doc with text, it's more visually appealing, and I enjoy reading them. And of course, Gmail, where we haven't had, students can now use Gmail from grade six and up. But the use of Gmail has been a great communication platform for us across the district. So, finally, some goals. I really would like to come up with a budget that would support a staff replacement plan. The laptops, they work pretty hard throughout the day. They're being sometimes transferred to multiple classrooms, unplugged and plugged in all day long. So, they certainly don't have the shelf life that desktop computers had, the ones we had years ago. So, about seven to eight years is about all you're going to get out of a Windows laptop. I would like to see the replacement of all the digital projectors with new interactive touch panels. We're currently looking at that right now. It's a...
It's a pretty amazing tool. It's pretty much a TV that students can touch and manipulate, and it can really be an entire teaching platform right in one device. So, it is pretty amazing. For staffing, we'd really love to see an instructional technology specialist. This is kind of a midrole, and this is not somebody that's going to do the nuts and bolts, fixing things, but working with teachers and coming up with curriculum that integrates technology, I think it's an important role in helping teachers. Because even new teachers that come in, they might not know all the technology that we use, so that person can work with that person and get used to the tools that we use. Also, a computer technician or maybe even an AV manager at the same time. Just the volume of repairs, as we bring in more technology into the classrooms, there's the need for repairs and maintenance and all that. So, having a computer technician is one of our goals. And of course, developing a budget that will support the technology needs for the future, something like the touch panels. That's the future, and projectors are kind of going out the door. So, we want to have a budget that supports that and continue to support the Chromebook one-to-one initiative, things like that. So, a budget is certainly important. And then, develop a software review process. If we're going to be using a new piece of software, whether it's on a large scale or even a small scale, that a single teacher or group of teachers want to use, how do we vet that to make sure that it's meeting privacy compliance? And is there a budget involved, or any cost, anything like that? And then, I would really love to see, going back to maybe even the instructional technology person, but a program for new hires, when they come in, how do you use all this technology that we have in West Bridgewater? I know we have a short afternoon with the new hires on their orientation day, but maybe having a larger scale where we have some time to sit down and get them into the Google environment, get them into the Apple environment, and really dig in how to use their grade posts and such. So, some schools are doing that. I think it's a great idea, so I'd love to see that implemented at some point in the future. So, I know there was a lot, but we have a lot going on. We have a lot of great technology, so I hope you all enjoyed reading the plan, and I'll take any questions if you have any right now.
I just had a question. Were you thinking the IT specialist coach would be like a K-12 position for the district? Yeah. Okay.
Yes. Some larger schools will have one per each building, but I don't think our small district would need something like that. But a teacher can schedule an appointment, "Hey, I want to do something with this new technology. How do I do it?" Or, "I saw this on Twitter, I'd really love to use that a little bit more." That's the role of the coach. Teachers can certainly reach out to me right now, but my schedule is pretty limited with everything else that I need to do. So, it's tough getting into classrooms and working with teachers in my role.
So, that was actually going to be my question. So, for those two hires, the instructional technology specialist and the computer tech, who's doing it now? When there's a repair...
I have a part-time technician that comes in a few hours a week, and myself. That's about it. I do have, I've got some good senior interns over the years. I have an intern right now, happens to be my son. So, I'll give him a pile of Chromebooks to fix, and he'll do it. So, having so many full-time, we can really develop a schedule, like, "All right, this needs to get done today, and then get the Chromebooks fixed." I've been taking some of the Chromebooks that are under warranty. I've just sent a bunch out to the vendor to get those repaired, so those should be coming back shortly. Yeah, it's myself and the part-time technician is doing it right now.
Who's writing with the goals with you? Is it just, you wrote the goals, but how are you developing them? Do you have a team that you're working with?
I always try to collaborate with the...
Other school districts?
Well, our school districts in the area, we do meet monthly through a MasQ subgroup. So, we meet and we just go over ideas, and what are your pains, what's working, what's not working. So, it's a great time to collaborate, see what other districts are doing. But here, I always involve the technology team, the computer teachers at the elementary school, the high school, Mrs. Giannis, and so we're, that's kind of, that's been our technology team, is what I call it. Well, it's not really official, but these are the people that have been most involved with technology over the years. And Mrs. Wenzel at the Howard School is the Howard School Computer Lead. Mrs. Alex at the Rose Hill is the Computer Lead over there. So, I certainly collaborate with them quite a bit when talking about goals and such.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I think when we look at Hannah and our students, we want to provide them with the best education possible to make you college and career-ready. And I think, hopefully, we're continuing to move in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Mrs. Goulet and Mr. Lehman for PBIS.
Good evening again. So, this is just a quick review of the SEL, the PBIS, that's a current and spring rose in this, Rosenhauer. So, the backlogs would be, we'll just put out some quick definitions of social emotional learning. Up there in the five, there are competencies. And there's a lot of research that just says if you explicitly teach these skills, students are going to be healthier, happier, and perform better. So, some of these things, we are beginning to deliver, so we are learning. Then PBIS, some of the, we already gave it a year ago. We just want necessarily to identify any colleagues something, but PBIS plays with a positive behavioral intervention support system. Essentially, it's when you come to Howard School and you see our pride posters, some of our PBIS is our Wildcat pride expectations, and it's be proactive to plan and anticipate a healthy climate and giving the students opportunities and serving different programs. I think that's a great Y definition, but most schools have some form of PBIS that you go into, and it, in my opinion, is something that pretty much all schools in our level should have some sort of. So, the first thing we did here, I did last year, was we realized that we needed to make sure we were aligning practices. And we stepped one steps from aligning to high school, division of the graduate. So, in the summer, we had a whole bunch of posters and banners made, so throughout our school, you could see the Division of the Graduate going up there, as well as WB banners, like Wildcat banners. And we got together and we got the expectations, we call it the matrix, in the classroom. So, that's just giving students very clearly defined expectations. It shouldn't be a mystery what we ask of the students, that they should know it and be sure they're doing that. So, that's essentially what we're going to call Tier One. So, I sort of rapidified. So, basically, we put the staff together and did the TFI inventory, which is Tier and Tier Down Deep inventory, which is, we look at what do we actually have going on at the Howard School, what don't we, and what are the next steps. And sure, I know the first one, which just says, "Do these things," just makes the building, the students and staff, a happier and healthier place to be. So, we modified and reviewed, maybe not the Friday matrix and behavioral expectations, and then with the staff, we reviewed what tiers are. Just like we had content and instruction, there's tiers of instruction. The same thing with social emotional learning, the behaviors, there's tiers, one, two, and three. And then, once again, then our posters, very visible to make sure that it was beginning to live in the schools. So, some of the things we did here, one is we had some pride surveys, free to post, just can we at least say what P means for pride, stuff like that, because it was year one, getting it off the floor. In morning meetings, reviewing the pride expectations and giving more concrete examples of what it looks like, sounds like, feels like, and models. Took some opportunities to increase teacher-student interaction, not just in the classroom setting. So, you can see a lot more teachers outside at recess, or in the lunch, yes, it's really, it does increase safety at the same time, and also allows students to interact with their teachers in a non-classroom setting, which is also important. We began, it was off the hook, the monthly assemblies, in the average, the monthly assemblies, just still to step in the right direction and coming back from COVID, very important. We began the ticket system around January, and we got some traction, and some support and details that they can do then again. And we continue to run some school-based campaigns.
So, the Rose Hill went through a little bit behind, which I'll head start on this, so just to back up a little bit with where we are. We're formally ruled out PBIS formally this school year. Last year, I formed an SEL committee with teachers, and a huge shout-out to them, because they gave a lot of time to getting this up and running. So, we met with teachers, we talked about what are our problem areas? And you can see on the left-hand side, that's what we call the Wild, you'll see the "The" of Wildcat and Paw prints everywhere, and that's what makes it so relatable to children. The Wildcat way, so this is our matrix, across the top are the different areas outside, not just in the classroom, but where else are we seeing problem areas? And then, down the left-hand side is what we're expecting. You can see that pause is there, too. The right-hand side was just a common language around voice levels, something as simple as what to sound like walking in the hallway, what should the cafeteria sound like? And we found that we really needed that common language across all classrooms and all settings. So, then, that also rolled into our PBIS, our PB WB Pride RLM. So, you can see on the left-hand side, we used the Division of the Graduate for the first couple of months, and then we kind of sat as a committee and said, "Well, what are we going to do the other months?" So, there's a lot of other things we could focus on. So, you can see we continue the P-R-I-D. And we know that some of those traits, we want to be able to kind of go through and pick different ones every couple of years. So, what the teachers do on the right-hand side, our SEL committee, again, did a ton of work. They provide this document every month to the teachers. You can see there's links in there, different stories. Ms. Messina is, I see, the guru of SEL, and a lot of those books she owns, and she lends them out to teachers. So, they have a wealth of resources and books and materials that they can kind of integrate into their classroom throughout the month. And then, the highlight, it's my highlight every Monday and Friday, and the kids do, too. They share the announcements in the morning, what determination or what does ingenuity mean to them. And hearing from a kid's perspective is always great, and we put a five or a six-year-old in front of a microphone, and they think they're like speaking in the spirit of that. So, it's definitely the highlight. We wanted to start our week off this way and end our week. And then, the last slide just shows. Some of our kiddos, you know, that we always take a picture of them when they do their announcements, the quote up in the right-hand corner, I can't remember the name of the book that was shared, but it says, "Don't yuck my yum." Don't say eww to someone's shirt, because it might hurt their feelings. And that's the voice of our first parent. At the bottom left-hand corner, you can see we, all the students every month get nominated by staff members, we're showing that caricature throughout the month, and we call them down and we take a picture and congratulate them. Not only do we see like they get highlighted here, but just naturally between PBIS and this pride program, teachers are just noticing that kids are kinder, taller than others. Last month, I did something special for the teachers. I took the teachers out for, I let the teachers out extra planning time, I took the kiddos out for recess, next to recess. And the amount of children who are just looking, and say, "Thank you so much for doing that." Just goes to show that they're kind of incorporating into their daily practice. One thing I forgot to mention at the back, because I'm going to bring it up, is the PBIS point. So, they're earning paw prints. So, whereas Mr. Lehman's using tickets, again, we want a pause. And I have a whole bunch of my pocket, and I've learned to take them out, because they go through the washing machine. So, we send out little tickets, and it's everyone in the school, and they're out throughout the school day. And they cash them in on Fridays. Our younger students, they want that quick, they want that gel pen, it's the first light, they'll give up the five. And then, some of our older students are starting to really think about, hmm, do I want the pen, or do I want the coupon for the free experience? And they're saving, which is a great life lesson as well. And we gave out our course certificate for a free experience. On Friday, so I forgot to mention that. I want to bring that up.
Thank you both. I think it's, oh, Mark. Oh, thank you.
This is just here, too. So, sort of just to piggyback off of what Keith has said, these are our assemblies, so now they're happening monthly. Best part of the month is seeing the students, because it's their work that they're putting on display in front of all, the whole school body. So, there's staff buying, the student buying, and it's just a really positive environment. I think that's what, not that it wasn't positive last year, but that's making a giant step this year, the self-awareness the students have, and just some of the interpersonal skills that they're using when a conflict arises. But either way, so this is where we've been so far. This month is positivity, last month was gratitude. And so, October, November, and December are lining up to the respectful pathways in that grades four, five, and six are using. You know, I know we need to get going, but so, either way, there's an SEL block for every class every week for 45 minutes. Sixth grade does it twice a month, twice a week at different times, because their schedule runs differently. We started September, and that whole one, just the pride expectations, and we put even more emphasis on it. The ticket system started in the fall, and the tickets and the pause really, really engage most of the student body, that says 85% of the students, who really, really work well with this. Same thing in the morning, we've done some mindful moments in the morning, not as much as we should, it's fallen off a little bit lately, but it's the self-practice, it's that we have been doing it. We have a weekly monthly wellness lessons, meetings, which we set an agenda for the teachers weekly, so they'll have the resources, it's just right there for them. And this is just some of the extra, some of the Tier Two stuff. So, if you see the graphs, a little chart of com, that would be more of a Tier Two strategy, called Chico, check-in, check-out. So, this would be just something that, you know, students, and you can see on my whiteboard, they come down, they graph with me, it's a great way to make sure I'm checking in and supporting any student who may need it. And it really continues our relationship to the students, and the rest is the nature and so on. And this is a training that principals went to last Thursday. It was very engaging, it was excellent, and it's just, it was under-started practices and free, all the students together, and it looks like things we are doing are purposeful, and as specialists say, that's what we're doing.
No, again, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for the involvement of your staff, and I think that's key, that this is not just top-down, this is really the school community coming together and prioritizing it for our kids. And to be successful learners, they need to feel safe, and they need to feel valued, and they need to be part of the school, and I think that's what we're doing. We want kids to love coming to school. I always say, 180 days is an awful long amount of time if they don't love coming to school every day. So, working together is very important.
It's a great update. All right, moving along, we have our student rep update. Hannah?
Hello, everyone. I'm sharing some updates about some of the students in the district that we have going on. So, starting off with the middle, senior high school, the course also room council occasion to perform some feature of songs for our local veterans for their luncheon. It was a wonderful opportunity to spend time with the veterans and thank them for all their services. This past Friday, we had lots of crazy socks for Dr. Socks Day, thanks to everybody who participated. West Bridgewater band had a great time marching in the Try Time Veteran Day Parade. They were proud to come out and recognize our veterans and thank them for their service. One of our seniors, Stephanie Stanton, did an amazing job directing Broadway production in part of this new project. The audience was treated to an amazing show. Our best buddies group has been very active. This is their first year for a group, and they have many great ideas they're putting together. Our winter sports season is up and running. We're looking forward to seeing some new people in the next few months. Moving on to the Howard School, the end of November was busy at Howard School. The halls were filled with parents' conferences, and we could hear the collaboration between parents and teachers. On the half-day before Thanksgiving break, the Howard School held their November assembly in the theme of gratitude. Students worked collaboratively on their projects and put them on display throughout the entire school body. A shout-out to the presenters for each grade who are applying their public speaking skills. We welcomed to center with our annual Dr. Socks drive on December 2nd. All proceeds go to inclusion... We welcomed to summer with our annual Rocker Socks Drive on December second. All proceeds go to Inclusion Matters. On December second, Howard School held a coffee hour to engage parents and guardians on school-in topics. On our next half-day, December fourteen, the Howard School will hold the Board of Grade Contest. And December nineteenth to the twenty-third will be our spirit. The calendar will be sent to all the topics. Next, our Rosemont School, the third graders wrote the book, "The Looms of Old Broadway," and designed the balloon of their own. After designing it on paper, they wrote a persuasive essay to Macy's to try and convince them to include their designs in the project. As a finale, they created the balloons and paraded around the R, RLM for first and second grades. Uh, the student council is back. We had a record number of applicants this year. Some of the, the council responsibilities will include running the box top fundraiser, hosting drives to help others, setting up new recycling programs in the school, and assisting with our school Wildcat Pride initiatives. On Friday, December second, RLM students were creating a mission of socks for the recognition of the International Day of Disabilities. As the Friday, as the Friday afternoon, RLM students raised three hundred thirty-one dollars. All the money raised will go towards WB SEPA C inclusion matters. And finally, the Spring Street School. Throughout the month of November, the preschool and kindergarten classes conducted lessons about helping others, especially those in need. There was great focus on the themes of kindness and generosity. And as a school, we did a great job demonstrating sharing with others. On Friday, December seventh, the Spring Street staff and students were praising Miss Macha's socks for the international disabilities. Um, as of Friday afternoon, the Spring Street students raised two hundred forty dollars. The money raised will go towards, um, WB, um, SEPA C inclusion matters.
Nice job. Thank you very much. All right, um, under business, Inclusion Matters update, Mrs. Dragonetti?
The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IUPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. Our annual Rocker Socks event, which celebrated International Day of People with Disabilities, was held this past Friday with terrific participation across all four West Bridgewater schools. The Board of Inclusion Matters is grateful to students, family, staff, and administration for helping to make this year's event a rocking success. With donations still being received, a grand total of funds raised will be shared later this week on our website, Facebook page, and through each school's newsletter. As more and more students with disabilities are included in our schools, we are all learning to include them. Not sure how, here are a few tips. Be curious. If you or your child has a question about a person's disability, ask them, their family, or Inclusion Matters. Be friendly. Every person and family wants friends. Invite people with disabilities and ask how you can make the event accessible. Be patient. Some people with disabilities need more time to talk or move their bodies. Teach your kids to be patient and to slow down. Be honest. If a child with special needs isn't kind, encourage your child to tell them so. Kids with disabilities need feedback to learn kindness too. And finally, be brave. Students with disabilities are at a greater risk of being bullied. Teach your kids to be upstanders and speak up when this happens. In the words of Nicole Herodix, "Inclusive classrooms support the abilities and recognize the possibilities of all students." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, Operational Services Division rate increase update.
Okay, the, the OSD is a division of the state, uh, government. And what it does, it does set rates for, um, approved special education programs within the state. Um, they are, traditionally, they've gone up around two percent. You can see over the, from FY eleven to twenty-two, they went up an average of one point eight seven percent. Um, but this year for FY twenty-four, they're proposing to go up fourteen percent, um, which is a pretty dramatic increase. Um, it's a topic of discussions amongst all superintendents in the MASSS. Um, and it looks like it's probably going to stick at that. So I just wanted to make you aware. I have reached out to our state reps to give them the information and just let them know what our concerns about that and what that does for West Bridgewater. If we take this year's numbers, not adding any potentially new students, it'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase over what we would normally, uh, expect for an increase. So that's, that's a pretty major, uh, increase for our FY twenty-four budget. Just want to make you aware and we'll certainly make others aware as we go through our budget process.
All right, and now MSBA?
MSBA. So we, um, just as a former, quick reminder, we, for those watching, that we did submit statement of interest for the Rosemont McDonald, the Spring Street School last April. Um, we were selected by the MSBA to do a senior study and they came out and visited both schools, uh, in September. Um, and as we progress through our discussions, we were encouraged to submit a statement of interest for the Howard School. And that opens up, the, their portal opens up late January through April. So regardless of where we stand with the project, we'll be submitting a statement of interest for the Howard School. The MSBA has their next board meeting on December twenty-first. Um, we hope to hear next week if we're invited to attend that meeting. Um, and at that meeting, they will vote on projects that are selected for the core project. So fingers crossed, um, that we are moving forward. Uh, if we are selected, there's lots of things that will have to happen, um, within a certain timeframe. Um, but if it doesn't happen this year, we're very hopeful it will happen in the near future. So just want to provide an update.
And then Reed's Collaborative.
And then just in your packets, you have the Reed's Collaborative Annual Report for FY twenty-three. Uh, details their programs, which we house one of them here at the middle, senior high school. Um, we're an active member of Reed's and I regularly attend their board meetings. Uh, they're, it's a great collaborative that we have, we pull many resources from.
Great. Thank you. Um, I'm just taking a look at the time. It's almost six o'clock and I know, um, some of us want to get to the, um, the town meeting, but do we, um, the policies that next on the agenda, is it going to be sort of a lengthy item or?
I don't think so. I think we can probably get everything done within five minutes.
Okay. All right, let's go.
We're good. Okay. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to open the following policies for review um, and discussion at our next meeting. GBEC, Workplace Drug and Alcohol Abuse Policy. GBED, Tobacco Use on School Property by Staff Members Prohibited. JICH, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use for Students Prohibited. ADC, Tobacco Products on School Premises Prohibited. DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority. DJA, DGA, Authorized Signatures. DH, Bonded Employees and Officers. DJA, Purchasing Authority. DJE, Procurement Requirements. And DK, Payment Procedures. Can I get a second? Second. Um, so these were selected, GBEC, GBED, JICH, and ADC. Were all selected because they are cross-referenced in the policies we're about to discuss and vote on. Um, all of the D policies were selected based on a review by MASC in their most recent newsletter. They reviewed all of the finance policies. So this is about half of the D policies. We'll open the other half at the next meeting. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Um, for the policies to review tonight, um, I'm, as usual, going to make various motions with, um, discussion points that are specific to the policies that are grouped based on discussion points. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt policies AHAMA, Parental Notification Relative to Sex Education, IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, and EEAJ, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds, as written and revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. So for these three, um, there were no major revisions made. Um, and they're just basically being aligned to, um, MASC recommendations.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to adopt policies EEA, Student Transportation Services, and EEA, Walkers and Riders, as revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. So there's minor changes to the verbiage to be consistent with MASC. Um, for provision of bus transportation, for, uh, we have, um, emphasis on the kindergarten students still receiving their, uh, door-to-door service, um, and students in grades one through twelve who live within one point five miles. Um, just to point out, it's not consistent with the MASC policy. MASC had differing, um, limits within, um, broken down by grades. However, we're recommending to not adopt what the MS, MASC has outlined and, um, keep it with what we currently have in practice, which is the one point five, um, for grades one through twelve. For policies E, EEA, um, we removed a section as it wasn't consistent with the MASC policy and not in line with our current practice for the which, uh, we have outlined as pedestrian bicycle safety programs. Um, there was some discussion in there about installation of flashing lights at the description, at the description of the, uh, West Bridgewater Police Department. And then for EEA, um, there was a whole section outlining, um, the transportation guidelines that we removed, that we removed them because they weren't really, um, all specific with the current practice. Um, and it was really very granular what was in there and, um, you know, it was subject to change with, with, you know, it, within every year. So, um, we found that that information that we recommended to remove that are in your policies to be, you know, they were found in handbooks or, um, you know, in the contract with the bus company, um, or superintendent procedures.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, move to adopt policies EEA, EA, Bus Driver Examination and Training. EEA, EB, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers. And EEA, G, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles, as written and revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
Um, discussion?
Yep. So these are new policies for our index recommended by MASC. The policies address transportation and safety. EEA, G, Private Vehicles, um, we're looking to adopt as written by MASC. EEA, EA, and EEA, EB, we're looking to adopt with some revisions to make specific to West Bridgewater. The revisions included, um, the delegation of responsibility to maintain safety protocols and follow federal regulations regarding the employment of bus drivers to the bus contractor rather than by the superintendents. We're looking for that change. All of the safety points that are included in these policies are, um, integrated into the contract with the G. That's it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it?
That's it. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, warrant sub?
November third, two thousand twenty-two for ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-three cents. November tenth, two thousand twenty-two for ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two for forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. And November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two for one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents. The following two payroll warrants. November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two for five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two for six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. As always, all warrants are public record and one sign are available in the Selectments Office for review.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee, we do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Seeing that we have none, I think in the interest of time, um, I'm not going to read the, um, wonderful events that we have coming up on the calendar, but they are, uh, accessible through our, um, agenda. That's linked on the town, uh, West Bridgewater website. Uh, um, next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is January ninth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM here in the Learning Common. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.